Yes, oh, I didn't, I saw the boat. I didn't, I didn't wave to you, I'm sorry, Tom.
We're ready to go.
I barely waved to Steve, I saw him go by.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was you. I wasn't sure, okay. I'll call this Board of Selectmen meeting, Town of Vonnalhaven Board of Selectmen Meeting to order for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Roll call. Tom Anthony, Lad Olson, Dawn Young, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Madhuri Stratten, all present.
Did Tom get the addition?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's one addition. 7E, Main State Ferry Service Advisory Board. Thank you for, I forgot I did it before he got here. Sorry, Tom.
I'd have got it as we went down through.
What's that?
I'd have known when we got there.
Yeah, right. Number two, approve agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Number three, approve the minutes from the September 3rd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Approve and sign Treasurers' Warrants, number 17.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Where is, oh, I have, never mind, sorry.
Number five, communications. Madhuri, do you have anything?
I do not have any communications.
Number six, speakers from the floor. Seeing none. We'll move on to number seven. Committee and departmental reports and appointments. Woodard and Karen.
Brent is in Spain, so I don't have any report from him, but Gabe is gonna give an update, is Gabe on?
She's not.
Oh, she's not. Okay. So, as you know, the, when we put the, Phase 1 of the project out to bid, the bid came back almost double what we had for funding for the EDA part of the project. So, we've regrouped and separated the project out and taken the stormwater part of it as a separate project, and we're gonna put everything back out to bid. Our hope is that the stormwater project can be funded by some money from USDA. We're working with them right now on an application. They're telling us that there's a lot of money out there. We're hoping that we qualify and we can get that funding. So, what we're doing right now is working with EDA, resubmitting the project as, you know, without the stormwater, and then we'll put it back out to bid. So that's kind of where we are with that downtown project. And then with Phase 2, the parking lot, we should be submitting, or Woodard and Karen should be submitting the design of the parking lot and some other reports later on this month. And he'll be coming out and we'll have some interactions with the public about that design. So we're moving forward with Phase 2 and Phase 3, as at the same time we'll be putting out, putting the Phase 1 part of the project back out to bid. I don't know if I can answer any questions. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of balls in the air, but, you know, we're trying to keep up with it.
It's good there was an alternative, so that...
Yeah, at least EDA is working with us on it, you know. Can you think of anything else? That's kind of where we are with the, with the project.
Yeah. So, no questions? Okay, thanks, Madhuri. So, the downtown project, Gabe, is not here. So, yeah. So, yeah, she probably wouldn't have much more to add. C, public works.
Any questions about my last few weeks of report?
No, it's very exciting. I've been on the road. Very happy on the road.
That's basically.
Yep. Doesn't matter, it's better than what was there. Very, very good.
You guys are doing a good job.
We're at about 181,000 right now. So, we're still just about where we're at. We did run into a few areas that needed to be built up more because once we got the tire up, we realized that it was wet. And we did not want to put tire back down over something that is wet. So, we added, Grandma talked to Madhuri about it, and she agreed that if we're there, we should fix it and not just... So, there are some areas, like I said, that we were not aware of that were a problem, but had been, they would become a problem if we didn't fix them. So, that's been taken care of, hopefully. Let's see what else. Catch basins were vacuumed out between yesterday and today. One by Carver's, I say this nice and loud. The one by Carver's is still blocked. It's clean, but we could not get the outflow even to start again. It's just like cement, so. It's just gonna continue to do what it does, fill up and then slowly drain. And not really much that we can do there. And we did find a few that are actually on our list of needing to be replaced, but they are actually captured in the downtown project. So, when we get to the stormwater part, those will hopefully be able to be taken care of. So, right now, we're working on fall grading. Can't believe it, but end of September, we're adding another calcium chloride, set up the dust control and have the road back up because it's so dry. We're trimming guardrails. We've got roadside mowing going on, and I have sand and salt coming out mid-October. So, we've had to get all the old salt out to the front and off the sides to put the new stuff in. We get that all done, so. We're working, working. The paving project is coming along. Obviously, which is, I said in the beginning, it's gonna be a little slow because, you know, we started late. And the transporter was working us into the schedule. I talked to Dave Whitney on a Wednesday, I believe it was. And on Thursday, when I went to talk to him again, it was a guy named Nate. I had no idea that Dave Whitney was getting done with the transporter. He does have several years, and he helped me bring everything over from school when we worked over at school, so. But, so that was a little bit of a snap, and we lost a couple trips out of that. But, we're getting it done. The rest of this week's off. Next week, we're hoping to squeeze in some more. We really only need three more trips. Probably nine, maybe 10 to 12 trucks, tops, to finish up to where we broke the road. So, fingers crossed we can get that done in the next two weeks. And then it's good until spring and figure out where we're going next, what we're doing next.
Sounds good, Millie. Good work.
Thanks.
So, are you going to leave the rest of the road the way it is for the winter?
As much as I hate to.
Okay, someone asked me in town.
Well, I was thinking about turning some to gravel, but it's gonna be really hard on the plows, and I just don't want to beat the hell out of my trucks.
Yep.
I mean, either way, they get beat up, but. Trying to do the least amount of damage.
Well, good, now I'll have an answer when someone asks me again.
Yes, absolutely. Send them my way if you can, so. I'm done.
Good, thanks.
D, appoint Maine Island Coalition representatives.
So, Catherine Haley was our, is our representative. Unfortunately, she hasn't really been able to go to the Maine Island Coalition meetings. So, I talked with her, and she's willing to back off and be the alternate. And I'm gonna, if you approve, I'll go on as the Maine Island Coalition representative, and then Catherine can be the alternate, if that's okay. Catherine and Gabe can be alternates.
Okay.
If you could just do that, then I'll go to, there's a meeting this Friday, and I was approached by the Island Institute representatives to, you know, talk about, you know, having representation there. So, and I agreed to come to this meeting, so.
Okay, so I'd make a motion to appoint Madhuri Stratten to the Maine Island Coalition representative, as our Vonnalhaven representative?
Second.
All in favor? And do we have to make a motion to make Catherine the alternate? Or would she just...
Well, why don't you, yeah.
Okay, and I'll make a motion?
To make Catherine, and, well, Gabe's already on there as an alternate.
Okay, so just Catherine?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Catherine Haley as the alternate to the Maine Island Coalition?
Second.
All in favor? All righty. 7E, Main State Ferry Service Advisory Board.
So, this is kind of the same thing. Alan let me know that he wasn't gonna be able to go this Thursday. And he's doing a great job. I'm not, I don't want to replace him as the main representative to the Ferry Service Advisory Board. But our alternate, Jen Fieser, is also somebody that's unable to go to these meetings because she works at the school. So, I talked with her, and I talked with Bill Gary today. And what I'd like you to do is just appoint me as an alternate. And then there, they can, the Ferry Service only has one member and one alternate. So, I can't really keep Jen Fieser on as an alternate. So, what I'd like you to do is just appoint me as the alternate, so if Alan's unable to go, then I can go. And there's, yeah, as I said, there's a meeting this Thursday.
Is there a reason that we can't have two alternates? Is it Ferry Service rules or ours?
Ferry, the bylaws.
Yeah. The Ferry Service bylaws.
The Ferry Service bylaws. The Advisory Board bylaws.
Okay.
I clarified that with Bill today.
Any other questions? All right, I make a motion that we appoint Madhuri to be the alternate to the Main State Ferry Service Advisory Board.
Second.
All in favor?
That's just a letter to Bill's saying that I'm the alternate now.
Thank you. Eight, old business. Seeing none. Number nine, new business. A, adopt general assistance ordinance with appendices. And we...
So, that's a, the Select Board members have to sign that, and I send that in to Department of Health and Human Services to let them know that we adopted the new ordinance with the new appendices.
Not really a choice on that one?
No.
Well, not much of a choice, I guess. I didn't know if I'd have any questions enough, but this is, this is the manual that I have to know in order to take an application for general assistance. There's a lot of detail that go along with it, and, yeah. It's challenging. And one of the new rules is that I, it'll be mandatory that I have training. Now, I've had plenty of training over my years as being a town manager, but they're going to implement an annual training requirement for general assistants. So, that's new. That's one of the new things.
And do we have to vote to approve this as well? Signing it?
Oh, did you vote to adopt?
We didn't vote. We did, we didn't. We need to vote to adopt. The general...
Yeah, just somebody make a motion, yeah.
Make a motion that we adopt the general assistance ordinance? Is that correct?
Yeah.
With appendices? With appendices?
So moved. Sorry.
All in favor? I think there was something missing, yeah. So, it's okay. We struggle through. Is that it on that?
I think so.
Okay. B, approve and sign certificate of settlement for 2024 real estate and personal property taxes.
This is just what Tax Collector presents. So, I mean, everything's either been paid or gone to lean.
Right.
Except for like $500.
Yeah. Oh, really? Oh, but, I think that was in there. One, two, three, four, five, that we didn't lean because they were under...
So, we just, what, need to...
Under a certain amount.
Vote to accept that, and then they sign it?
Yeah. So, um... Vote, I make a motion to approve and sign the certificate of settlement for 2024 real estate and personal property taxes. All in favor? C, review lease agreement for deputy housing.
Jared Austin has looked at this house. Jane Sullivan would be the landlord. She's proposing a two-year lease. I did hear from Jared that he's a little, even though we are the, the town is signing the lease, he's a little nervous about a two-year lease. For instance, what if he found a house that he wanted to buy out here? So, do we want to still sign this for two years? I mean, I've talked about this in the past whereby we got burned in the past with deputies that came out, and then we rented something, and then they left, and we were stuck with the lease. So, this is, this lease is a two-year commitment between Jane Sullivan and the town.
Well, is there some reason she wanted a two-year lease?
It was my understanding that, that that's what Jared had originally wanted, but...
Would she...
He had sent me something more recent that said that he's a little nervous about a two-year lease.
Would she reconsider and write it for one year instead? You know?
Well, I know that she's, intends to leave the country, and she wanted to have the two-year lease in place so that she would have some sense of, what? Comfort that the, the place was rented for two years.
She's gonna be gone for two years?
Yeah.
Obviously.
I mean, if Jared found a place to rent, the town would still have that facility for her. But one of the deputies left, or there was another, something else happened, even though we had a two-year lease, we'd have that as a place for someone to stay.
I think I'd need to make it clear to her that it might not be Jared, then?
Yeah.
Is that...
I would, I would say that, yeah.
I would think that you might want to talk to Jane before we continue here. Yes, Millie?
Which house is this? Is this something else?
Jane McDonald's.
Okay. Isn't that still on the market?
Sullivan.
That's Jane Sullivan, right?
Mm-hmm. Previous, previous owner.
Yeah, the previous owner was...
Did she buy it, just buy it?
Jane?
Yeah.
She's owned it for a while.
It's for sale right now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's for sale.
Yes, spent for sale for a while.
It's not for sale, but she's planned, as soon as the lease is signed, she's gonna make sure it's off.
It's got a for sale sign, and it's on the website. That's where I was going with it.
But I do think that she's open to a agreement that if Jared found another place, she probably would go, okay, with a one-year, with an option to renew.
Okay.
So, why doesn't she make the lease with him? Why does it have to be with the town?
It's in the contract, isn't it?
In the past, we have done that, and the town paid the rent, but the deputy has signed the lease.
Well, yeah, let's just check in and see if we can get a one-year lease, and then circle back to it. Or a one-year with the option to renew for two.
Okay.
I would think that would be...
I don't think we should sign a two-year lease.
Okay.
And what happens to us if she, the house sells next month?
I think she's gonna take it off the, or at least my understanding is that she's gonna take it off the market.
Oh, okay.
Once the lease is been agreed upon.
Oh, okay. That makes a little more sense to me, then.
Yeah.
Because I was hesitating to think that we're gonna sign a lease if the house sells.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, the house is sold, sorry. But, um...
Okay, I'll get back in touch with her, sorry.
Okay, that'd be great. I think that's, that I can...
Is it okay to do a subject to approve? That you could approve it if it goes one... We approve a one-year tonight. That way, we can get it signed and sealed. Anyway, we don't have a one-year lease in front of us.
To make that motion.
We have a two-year, we have a two-year lease in front of us.
I don't, I'm not signing anything until Madhuri talks with Jane Sullivan. That's my personal feeling.
I feel the same.
Okay.
Good. I'm glad there's a place for him and his wife to move to. That's, takes a lot of problems off the plate, but I'm still, we're good to get it cleared up with them. All righty. D, ambulance director resignation.
So, as you can see from the letter that I put in your packet, Ryan has resigned, and his, the end date of his service will be September 18th, which is this...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So, I've had meetings with Denise and, what's his name here? Mark?
This is to read his shirt. You got that to swap, child?
Also, we're fortunate that Pat Lundholm has come back in to help out with paperwork and just to help with training, right?
Basically, yeah, so, um... We've been meeting almost every day for a week or two since we found out he was, he had his resignation. So, short term, the plan would be that I would take the director's job. Denise will be the deputy director, deputy chief, if you want, whatever kind we might give it. Officially, it's definitely director. Pat Lundholm has agreed to do the education in QI portion. Jen Desmos will be a deputy director, and Jeff is still an effective control officer. That's short term.
Mark, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. That's short term.
So people can hear.
Sure. And, you know, who knows what the long term's gonna look like? We're definitely short-staffed. We've met with crew to see if we can get any more participation from the EMTs that we currently have and that are ready to take test to license. You know, we're hopeful that we can pick up some of that. Again, it's gonna be a challenge. Pat's, she told me not to use the word graciously, but she's came back to, more or less, to provide a little support. She wants to do as least call as she can. But basically, she's there to kind of coach Denise and I in responsibilities and duties and that kind of thing. So, we have come up with a spreadsheet that kind of has broken down tasks and responsibilities that some that myself are gonna do, some that Denise are gonna do, some that if we get her DMs in the station, that they can do, some of the, you know, take the garbage out, wash the truck, those kind of jobs that basically anyone can do while they're doing a per diem work. Again, it's a challenge. It's gonna be a learning curve for both of us. As far as that side of the house, we, so be patient with us. We'll do our best to keep things moving along, but we don't know what the long-term goal is here. I mean, we've always, the last two we've hired directors, I don't know if that's the route we should still be going. Maybe we should be looking at hiring just full-time EMTs instead of the director position. If we can, if this works out, then we can manage the engine and some of that, so. Too early to say. Maybe by the end of September, we both resign, and that'll be it. But I think we just need to, you know, spend some time looking at the different possibilities that are out there to increase staffing. I think that's our main concern, is that we don't have enough people to fill those roles. So, that and just plugging ahead with the day-to-day stuff and on top of the other jobs that we're already doing, so. I think tonight, we would need an appointment, myself, the director, effective after tomorrow.
Okay.
So, we can submit that paperwork to the state.
And Denise already has the designation of, what did you say?
Deputy director.
Deputy director.
So, I think the only thing you have to appoint is the director.
And that's a requirement by the state?
Yes. I mean, I think you, you appoint or hire the amos director, right? And that's gonna be a position that's no longer there, so I think that needs to be officially voted on, be my thinking, but maybe there's other...
So, you would be the ambulance director?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Just another.
Yep, well, you know...
I'd like to share my business card.
Okay, I'll, I'll share it with Pam. I'll show her the preview.
Designations in the interim.
Did you see?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, I'll say, I have concerns about how to handle all of that. So, hopefully, we can divvy out some of that work that will make it easier. I'm a person that likes to have hands on everything and anything just because I know it's done and done right, or my men, right? And I have, it's my own personal block that I don't delegate well, but trying to work through some of that. It's gotta be a necessity, I believe, so. So, that's where we're at right now. I think it's a good plan for the short term, and definitely moving forward. I don't know, I can't sit here tonight and tell you what that's gonna look like, but we can tell you we're pretty dire straits right now. We're just a few EMTs short of opening the doors, and that's really not an option. That's why both Denise and I have kind of hemmed at, and the rest of the crew that have stepped up to, you know, we care about the service, we care about the town, and we'll do everything we can to keep the doors open. I see, we can't function, I mean, the ICMS, they basically said they can't function without an ambulance service. And when someone goes into cardiac arrest, the provider can't go there by itself. Yeah, and a lot of that's there, so.
Mark, question. So, are you, are we advertising for a new person? Or are we holding off because you don't know what that looks like?
I would suggest, this week, at least, we're holding off because I'm not sure, like I said, I don't, maybe, maybe we're going at this wrong. Maybe we should be hiring different staff and not the director. I, I think we need to do a little more, looking at the budget, looking at who we can get, and just doing some thinking, in, you know. My hopes is that we can foster some of the people that are already on the crew that, and we can get more people that are already on the island to do this, because as you know, the challenge of bringing someone from the mainland is huge. It's housing, it's, you know, they've gotta be happy, the spouses gotta be happy. There's a lot of roadblocks you've gotta get over. And if, if we can, you know, bring someone up from the island that maybe, you know, maybe they're not the director, maybe they're just a full-time EMS person that can fill shifts that we, is basically what we hope we need, but...
Out of the licensed EMTs on Vonnalhaven, how many are active?
Currently, I would say five or four. Plus, we have some drivers.
Out of how many?
Whatever.
That's what I can count.
All nine.
Counting drivers.
Yeah, with the drivers. Drivers don't, you can't.
It's hard, I mean, like, I, I do a lot of call time, and I don't, I can't, I, I can't be in the office all day, every day, and you call every night. You can't.
No, push cans.
All that, so.
Right. Right.
It's, it's just, so we're trying to find a happy medium and this isn't anything either of us wanted or intended to happen, but.
Well, without much notice, it's, it's hard, but we'll persevere. You'll persevere.
We hope.
Yeah.
We'll try.
You will.
We'll try.
When would be a good time for to get back together to see what your status is and what your recommendation is?
I think probably, you know, give us a month or so to figure things out. We'll try our best to come up with some kind of a long-term plan or suggestions that maybe we follow. I think we can probably pull something together at that time. Again, it's all, it's a whole learning curve for all of us of finding what files are where and what reporting we have to do with the state. I mean, there's just a lot to it that neither one of us have. You know, I'm in the building, I can do EMS work, I, no problem with that, but as far as the admin on that side of the house is somewhat different.
Ryan has been good. I had a good conversation with him and he has offered, he doesn't start his new job until October 9th, so it's more than welcome to come in. He said he's a former employee, so he is more willing over the next couple of weeks to help out too, so.
His long-term plan, you know, everyone's plans change obviously, but his long-term, they hope to stay on the island. He hopes to participate still both fire and EMS, so. Let's see, hopefully things across, that he continues that. He is a, he's a good guy, he's a good EMT, he's been firefied, so. Get a little bit out of him, that's great, so. I don't wanna leave, definitely any hot chills with him, so. I understand totally if I was Eddie, you'd probably done the same thing, so. Taking the job, so.
So our next steps are just, as Mark said, to figure out what we wanna advert, what we wanna, you know, what type of person we wanna advertise for. Instead of just advert, you know, going right back out and advertising for an ambulance director, let's take a little bit of time and rethink and
Yeah.
decide what, how to, how to move forward.
I just have to appoint Mark.
Yeah.
So that. Yeah, um, yeah, and don't, there's no rush to get, I mean, when you're comfortable to come back to us, don't think that we're gonna hold you to any time.
Sure.
You know.
We'll keep, you know.
It might be tomorrow.
Probably be longer than. Don't say that.
My business now comes with a lot of, uh, my email address has changed too, so.
It's not gonna be the little, whatever it is, two-by-three card. It's gonna be like a.
It's a full-size stack.
Well, there, okay, so any other questions or comments anybody want?
Pat has been really good. I appreciate her.
Yes.
Definitely appreciate her stepping forward when she definitely didn't have to do that.
I know. Yeah, that's amazing.
I asked her what's going on and she went, "Well," and I went, "Oh, no." But she is a huge help and a source of
Good resource.
knowledge there.
Trying not to. Based our model on her being there for long, just, I'm sure she doesn't wanna be there. Appreciate every minute she's putting in, but.
Yeah, yeah.
She's been retired like three times.
I know. She retires and then, "Oh, no, I'm back." Well, that's great that she can help. All right, so, um, I would make a motion that we appoint Mark Candage, um, as the ambulance director. So is that a proper enough one?
Sure.
All, all in favor?
You sure you wanna do that?
Yeah. It's too late, it's all done.
It's done.
I was hoping to be a no.
So I don't see anybody else either.
What point?
Well, thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys go above and beyond the calls, so.
You are appreciated.
Be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Deep breaths, right? Okay, thanks, guys.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Ten, report.
Oh, did Gabe, if she, she.
Oh, I don't know. Did Gabe, did you wanna, did you wanna say?
No, I mean, only if you guys had any questions. I don't know, Marjorie, I don't know if Marjorie already shared information.
She did.
I did, uh, give the information, you know,
I would, would you?
You know, that, the last information that we have that we're working with EDA and going, eventually going back out to bid.
We kinda suspected that you and her would have the same thing to say.
That's probably correct. Okay, well, if you don't need me, I will sign off, but thank you.
Thank you, Gabe.
All right, take care. Bye.
You too. See ya. Marjorie, report of town manager.
Oh, I gave you a, this budget report is, uh, for the 2024 fiscal year. I'm not sure if it's the final, final, but it's, you know, I, I think it is. We've got, um, you know, after June 30th, we always get bills that come in and that we have to pay that were really from the previous year, so there still could be some adjustments. The only thing that went over was public work, no, I'm Lincoln. It was, um, transfer station, uh, by about 14,000, but I think all in all, uh, the final budget looks good. I mean, it's, you know, 97.6% expended. I think it's reflection of, you know, we had a good budget and we didn't go over our, we only went over on one.
Yeah.
One department. But certainly if you get home and look at this and you have any questions, uh, let me know. And pretty soon we'll start working on their 2026 budget.
Good Lord.
Wow.
Please, let's not rush, let's not rush things.
Okay.
Still too nice out to talk about anything for
I agree.
upcoming budget season.
A second thought.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Um, eleven, report of members. Tom?
It's nice to see the ball ground.
Yes.
Mode. Looks very nice.
Absolutely.
Thank you for getting the storm drains cleaned out. I'm sure the dank patrons will be very happy. I walked by that one this morning, that one was pretty bad.
There was a couple of them.
Did it get cleaned so it will drain now?
Oh, they would, they would drain anyway 'cause the pipes are pretty high.
Yeah.
The, I mean, it's just the sediment and the water just.
Clogs them up.
Quick question, Marjorie.
Yeah.
With our recycling program, the EcoMain, is that who we use? Is there any chance we could work with them on recycling the cardboard from our buying, uh, lobster trap buying sta, lobster buying stations? 'Cause all of that cardboard is going into the demo right now and not being recycled.
Because?
Ah, that's a good question.
It's dirty.
It's all.
Is it plastic coated?
It's really the dirt or.
It's all pla, no, it's not.
It's not, not now, it was.
Some, some of it is.
Some of it is, but most of it's not. It's, all the fish is, is in plastic bags inside the boxes. So it's just, if we could find a way to have that not go in the demo and go to the recycling end of it, it would, oh, there's still a lot of cardboard floating. The reason this brings up is I, I steam buy cardboard floating in the water all the time.
You what?
Steam buy, I, when I'm out to haul, I go buy cardboard floating in the water all the time.
Oh.
And if we can get it out of the water and out of the demo, we clean up the environment.
How do I get people to stop throwing in the water?
Give them an outlet to make sure that it's recycled.
Why isn't it not, why is it not being returned to the buying station?
Well, there's a couple of buying stations that won't take it back.
Yeah.
Because it's a pain in the neck to deal with. But if there's something we can do to kinda mitigate the, get, give them an outlet that's cost-effective to recycle this cardboard. It's a lot of cardboard. Significant amount of cardboard.
Fish in it, so that's why.
It's bait, yeah.
Yeah.
It's frozen fish that's in a plastic bag inside the cardboard box.
They get pretty nasty, though.
Actually, they don't. They steam every day, every day. And then most of the, I mean, I know the beans and the co-op take them, the fish out of the boxes. The, the dock workers do this ahead of time. So before the fish even gets a chance to thaw. So 90% of the cardboard is relatively clean. Maybe we can burn it with the wood instead of putting it in the demo.
They used to do that and can't.
Can't do that.
They can't. They won't let you do that anymore.
Oh, no.
That's why it's going, that's why it's going in the demo.
Right. I'm just trying to, I mean, it would save the town money on the demo side and it would.
Yeah, I can call and talk to them about it. I'll talk to Kitty and see what his rationale is and call EcoMain.
All right.
Thank you.
What? Don?
Now that you mention it. Marjorie and I spoke with the, uh, engineers a couple of weeks ago, we got in the North Haven Road. And there's, uh, significant pot, potential cost. We're trying to nail that down now. But we're gonna have that no matter what we do. So that North Haven Road, I don't think any of us in good conscience can keep ignoring it. It is, it is a potential danger when someone going through, down the road and running into it and having an accident. It's something that we've ignored or haven't had a chance to do with him over a long time. I think we need to, once we have a number from, uh, Woodward and Curran on the cost of permitting, we're gonna have to follow through, 'cause no matter what option we take, we're gonna have to get the permits. So I think it's, it's worth, uh, being aware that we need to do this. It's in my estimation, we, I don't think we could leave that road the way it is.
Are you talking about the road or are you talking about the culvert?
Well, if the road is, flooding of the road, the question is where, how do you address it?
We've talked about it before because underneath all the layers, it's just mud.
Yeah.
So we, we have discussed it and I think we got an estimate and this was probably a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we have, no, we have the report. Yeah, we have the report. They had estimates for
700 and something.
Road repair.
4,000.
Suggestions for, um, the culvert. But the most recent meeting we have, I'm still waiting for that report, and he was going to just check in with, um, we met with Army Corps of Engineers. And, um, but the other big permit would be from DEP, so, uh, Woodward and Curran, they owe us a report on this meeting, but he wanted to just check in with DEP to get their response to this, the proposed project that was given to us about placing the, uh, rocks or boulders on the, what would you call that, the chapel side?
Yeah, the chapel side, yeah.
Of the, um, in the cove. Anyway, so that, we had that discussion with Army Corps and I'm supposed to be getting a report from them and they, but they wanted to check in with DEP before issuing that brief report. I mean, it's not gonna be anything like this. I'm not saying that. It's just, you know, this is what, we met with Army Corps and this is what they said and this, this would be the requirement.
And again, the hope that we have is that if we get permission to build the route we would like to build, we're probably looking at less than a hundred thousand for the actual work compared to seven or eight hundred thousand.
For the culvert itself, yes.
Well, um, I don't know if people still have a copy of the report that we have, but if you ever wanna look at it or.
We talked about floodgates and
Yes.
raising the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it? Allison?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, there. Um, so I'd make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to 1 MRS section 405.6, a personnel, personnel matter to discuss the town manager position. Bye, Millie, thank you.
Bye, thank you.